I'd like to call the order, the Tuesday, May 16th, 2017, meeting of the Planning Commission. Sarah, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Knudsen?
Here.
Commissioner Monet?
Here.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Here.
Vice Chair Parker?
Present.
Chair Kistner?
Here. The next item is a public forum. This is an opportunity for the public to address the commission on items of interest to the public that are not on this agenda. Because of restrictions imposed by the Brown Act, the commission may not engage in discussion or take action on matters not described on the agenda. Please observe the time limit of three minutes. Is there any public comments? Seeing none, I close the public forum. The consent items are, 4.1 is the approval of minutes, May the 2nd, 2017. 2017, that's good grace. Are there any corrections to the minutes?
Nope. I didn't see any.
So I hear a motion to approve the minutes?
Still moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Monet?
Yes.
Vice Chair Parker?
Yes.
Commissioner Knudsen?
Yes.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
Chair Kistner?
Yes. Next is a public hearings. Item 5.1, which is PL 17022, request by Billy and Lisa DeVore for a use permit amendment ordered to allow for food and beverage service at an existing retail space located at 1351 Main Street in the Central Business District. May I have a staff report, please?
Yes, thank you Chair Kistner. The applicant is seeking a use permit amendment in order to modify an existing use permit to allow for food and beverage service in addition to retail sales at the current location of Napa Valley Extravirgin at 1351 Main Street. The existing use permit space was approved in 2005 and allowed for specialty food store, offering olive oils, vinegards, mustards, and those sorts of items. This permit authorized operation of retail food store with no onsite preparation of food products and takeout. The accessory sale of wine and tasting of wine was permitted with the use permit. The applicant wishes to modify this previously approved use permit in order to permit the service of food and beverages, including cheese, charcuterie, caviar, olives, as well as beer and wine service in addition to the previously approved retail operation. No commercial kitchen exists in the space, nor is one proposed. Food would be produced off-site, stored in commercial refrigeration systems, and cut, sliced, and plated onsite. The applicant would reconfigure the interior space to provide seating for up to 32 people. They expect to have one to three full-time employees, and the proposed hours of operation would be Tuesday through Sunday, 11 to 10 p.m. Just a quick note, there was an eating and drinking establishment prior to the established retail use. Consistent with the Central Business Land use designation of the general plan, the site exhibits its zoning designation of central business as well. This designation provides for retail, personal services, offices, restaurants, hotels, motels, and other similar uses. Eating and drinking establishments do require use permit in the Central Business District. Furthermore, the proposed restaurant space is subject to the regulated food and beverage inventory as a new food-serving establishment. Municipal Code Section 1748090 caps the number of regulated food and beverage establishments in the city, but has been increased from time to time over the years to accommodate new use permits in town. An increase in the number of permitted food and beverage establishments requires City Council action, and such approval has been added as a condition of approval to this resolution. The applicant's building is within the city's Parking Impact Overlay District. The purpose of the Parking Impact Overlay District is to establish parking standards for portions of the city generally located within the Central Business District. This area of the city is impacted by a lack of off-street parking because the buildings are of historic and unique character and were constructed in the early history of the city when automobiles were not as common. As the attached floor plan shows, there are two dedicated parking spaces directly behind the building, which meets the municipal code requirements. Staff finds that the project complies with the required findings to approve a use permit, and therefore recommends that the Planning Commission determine that the project is exempt from the requirements of SEQA pursuant to Section 15301, and accept the required findings and approve a use permit amendment for 1351 Main Street. I would be happy to answer any questions you may have at this time. The applicant is here if you have any questions of them as well.
Anyone have any questions?
I have a question. How many people does the, can be seated now in the way it is? Anyone?
None.
Zero. Okay, and let's see. Oh, and how many current employees?
I do not know.
Okay, thanks.
The original use permit called for three.
Oh, it was for three employees. So when they say they're going to have one and a half, is that in addition to who, what's there now, or is that?
One and a half what?
Employees, or?
They're going to have one to three employees.
Oh, one to three. So, and they're, okay.
So about the same.
That's what the original use permit said.
Okay. But currently, I was just wondering if they have one, or two, or three current?
I don't know.
Not how many are allowed, but how many are actually there? You don't, okay.
Let's ask the applicant.
Yeah.
Anyone else have any questions? Would the applicant like to speak?
I do know that there are two employees.
Would you please stand up at the podium, please? Identify yourself.
I'm Lisa DeVore. We do know that there are two workers there now, two young ladies. We've met them, but I don't know the hours that they work, as far as if it's full-time or part-time.
Would you like to have anything else that you'd like to add?
Nothing unless you would like me to add something.
I would. Would you mind talking a little bit about your vision for the reconfigured property?
Sure. Can I also have my husband come up and speak as well?
Absolutely.
In case he may have something better to say than I. Our idea is, we moved here a little over a year ago, and we kind of just fell in love with this town. And we're kind of, not late-night eaters, but we like to go to the movies, or we like to do pre-dinner stuff, or just have a little glass of wine and some cheese for dinner. And we just kind of found that, that's what's missing in this town, a place to kind of just go relax, read a book, pre-date night, after a movie, and have a good time, and just have conversation, and have a little snack and a little drink. And that's what we'd like to provide to the community.
And what hours are currently in the use permit, and what hours are?
I think it was either five, I think it was six, David. I'll have to look again.
Okay.
Ten to six.
Ten to six, I think it was.
And what hours then would be anticipated under the new usage?
Is that a question for me?
Well, I was going to ask Aaron, Mr. Heacock.
They're proposing 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m.
I also, there is a sink, there is a sink in, yeah. Will there be, is there, or will there be a dishwasher, or anything like that?
Absolutely.
There is, there is now, or?
There isn't now, but there will be.
Okay.
Yes. Like under the bar, like commercial dishwasher, to wash the glasses and the dishes, things like that.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
That's on the plan.
Thank you.
It's on their plan.
Anyone else have any questions?
Oh, I didn't see it. Sorry.
Do you have any other questions?
Oh, I'm sorry, no.
Did you have a question about the decor? Is that what you were asking? Didn't you ask that?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Didn't you ask a question about the decor, or vision of the decor?
No, it was more just a vision of the way you saw the business operating, and what the need was, and, you know, how you anticipated putting it together, not about the decor necessarily.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
No, that's right.
Thank you, appreciate you.
So any further, a public comment then? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
No public comment? Would you like to start the discussion?
Sure, I mean, I, sure. I really like the idea. I mean, I just really think it's a great idea, what you're doing. But I do have a question about the water use.
I do too.
I mean, all of a sudden, 32 people are going to be in there, and there's going to be a dishwasher, and I don't see how there can be, I know by the definition, by the narrative underwater in our, in our staff report, that none of those things are happening, but there is going to be an increase in water. I don't, I'm not saying it's significant enough, I just don't know what it is, and I just have questions about it. There are going to be, you know, I don't know, a lot of people there using the restroom, flushing the toilet a whole bunch more, and washing glasses and so forth. So I just had some concerns about that. I, you know, I have no, I think it's a great project, and, you know, I have, that's just one of my concerns. Otherwise, I support the project.
And I have the same concern. You've got 32 people with a dishwasher and a public restroom now, which really is almost like a restaurant.
More than 32 people a day, maybe, you know, so, anyway.
Yeah, I mean, as detailed in the staff report, it doesn't meet our definition of new development, and therefore, no additional conditions were added. Public Works Department reviewed the project, and they had no concerns.
But you're amending a use permit that did not have those facilities before.
Correct. And it was a food and beverage establishment before, it was a retail one, historically, as well as I understand.
Planner, Heacock, can you tell us then a little bit about what the prior use before it was a retail establishment, in terms of food and beverage, and what sort of, is there anything?
It was, it was, it was the lounge. It was a bar. It operated for many years, and had later nights. It opened later.
Was it 21?
Pardon?
Was it 21 or something?
It might have been that before, but it was the, it was the lounge. I mean, I think like 15 years, and it operated later in the day, but the total hours were probably the same, because I think it closed at 1:00. You might know? Oh, yeah.
You've got to reopen the.
Do you want to reopen the public comment?
We'll reopen public comment. Go ahead.
I don't do this either. My name is Annette Smith, and I'm one of the landlords, and my cousin is here too. Over 50 years ago, our parents bought that building, and it was the pastime club, and it remained, and that was the lounge, and they did have seating, and a dishwasher, and occasionally food there, but it was a long time ago, I understand that. And it was, then it, when my parents retired, it became the Cellar, then it was the Dutra Bar, then it was 1351, the Lounge, okay, which is, and it was a real happening place at that time for young people, because they were open late, and they had music, and it was a lot of fun then. And it's really only been the Olive Oil Factory for the last 10 years. It was first a different tenant, and now a new one who was in there as Olive Oil, but prior to that, there was a lot of people in there, and it was very successful, it was fun, and if you didn't want to sit at a restaurant the whole time, you know, it's a place to go. So that's, that's kind of the history of the building, if, questions?
I do have a question then. Presumably with the lounge and with the bar, through all these different iterations over the many, many years before it was turned into a retail, excuse me, retail establishment 10 years ago, there were public restrooms, is that correct?
Yes, in fact, there were two, and now there's only one. Is that correct, Ronald? Yeah, yeah. So, and, you know, you have, I mean, it's off the topic maybe, but there are other places in town that serve food, and do not have a public restroom, but they send hordes of people up to Lyman Park to use the restroom there, so.
Can you tell me about the, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. Is it anticipated that you'd use a low-flow toilet, or other sort of water mitigation efforts in that?
I, I might need Ronald, I'm sure, because when they did that remodel for handicap and all that stuff, I'm sure it was, they must have put in a low flow at that time. I don't know, my dad was in charge then. But we would, of course we would, do as much as we can. I mean, we're well aware of the water problem in this town.
The building code requires the use of water-efficient fixtures in all new remodels, so this will require that.
Great, thanks.
Okay, you're welcome.
I'm going to close the public comment. You're going to close.
Does any more public comment?
No.
Please come to the podium.
My name is James Anzalone, I reside at 1875 Madrona Avenue, and I'm the current tenant of 1351 Main Street. And the past few years has been really fantastic for me as a businessperson in St. Helena, I've really enjoyed the experience and everything. Like I said, you know, 1351 is actually, I've been here for 19 years now, I came to study at the Culinary Institute. And I remember back when I was studying there, and the lounge was a popular spot for me to go and visit and enjoy the company of friends and people in the valley, so it was beneficial to St. Helena for the nightlife there. You know, a place like this would be great. It's something that St. Helena is missing, for people coming to enjoy. Their vision for cheese and charcuterie and expense and olive oil thing is great. One of our challenges is being able to just do olive oil there, we're limited, because people want to be entertained a little more than taste some olive oil with salmon vinegar. We do some almonds and popcorn as well. So it's beneficial for the town, they're bringing tax dollars and so forth. With that, I just think it's a great idea to allow them to do what they need to do here, and make St. Helena Main Street a little better, and a little more nightlife, and give us more things to do here. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Ronald Rata, I currently live in Hillsburg, but grew up, spent most of my life here in this town.
I'm sorry.
Along with Annette, I'm one of the family owners. And I'd certainly like to speak in behalf of the prospective new tenant. While I don't live in this town anymore, one of the complaints I hear is there's really no nightlife for the kids. Kids being 30, 40 years old, 20, at my age. I think I'm older than most people in this room.
Count that.
I'll be 73.
I'm a little older than that.
Okay. I'll defer to my elders. And I think this is something the town needs. I mean, there is nothing in this town that, after hours, I mean, I live in Hillsburg, you go there late at night, and the town is hopping, and most of the time I drive through St. Helena late at night, and you could park a semi on town. And that's not good for the young people in town, and this is something that's, it's not only local serving, it serves the younger people, 21 and up. And I know when I go to a restaurant, I don't like to sit there, because I was in the wine industry for a long time, I don't like to sit there and sit over coffee while there's people trying to, trying to wait. And this is something that people can do before they go to dinner, something they can do after and not tie up valuable restaurant space. I mean, as a restaurateur, I don't like to see people sitting there, lingering over a cup of coffee for 40, 50 minutes after they've had their dinner. Something they can go to the show, something this town needs, and I think that it would be a tremendous addition to this town. Thank you.
Any more public comment? Closed public comment. Sarah, would you like to start the discussion?
Well, I, I loved the lounge. I was very sad to see it go. I was legally allowed to be in there at the time, contrary to comments made earlier before the meeting. I am concerned about the water, but with, I think that, I think that the benefit of having a spot for pre-movie and post-movie, and having a little bit more life down on that side of Main Street is important. I also really like that it's going to be open on Tuesdays, because a lot of restaurants close on Tuesdays, so it's another spot for people to be able to go grab something to eat, when, you know, Tara and a few other restaurants could close. Yeah, I'm in full support of the project.
Let me go again? Okay, yeah, I am totally, I think it's wonderful. However, I think it's a false dichotomy to say that it's either doing something about the water, or having a great place. I think we can do both. It could be that the retrofitted toilet will make up the difference, but to my understanding, the water use is based, I mean, a water analysis would be based on the water use of the business that's currently in it, or was in it just before. And that was clearly less, and I think there should be some analysis. I mean, it doesn't fit the letter of the ordinance to do any kind of water analysis here because of what you have in the staff report. But it does fit the spirit of water neutrality, to at least find out if it's water neutral, and if not, what it would take to make sure that we respect that, I don't know, it's part of the culture of our town, to always be careful about water, whatever we're doing. And when it changes, if the water use is going to change, I think we should just look at to see what the difference is, and to see what would need to be retrofitted to really bring it to be water neutral, since at this point, I don't see that, that we know. So, I mean, I don't mean to interfere with this at all, I totally support, you know, the project, but I think it's really important that we support this part of our process too, to really be sure about whether or not the water, whether or not we mean to retrofit something, or change something in order to keep this water neutral, so, you know, I support it with that caveat.
May I ask the Public Works Director how far back you can go on something like this? If you're going to analyze the water problem?
It's supposed to be, it's supposed to be based on the business that was just prior to it. That's my understanding.
Well, I'm asking the Public Works Director.
We don't go back to the bar.
I would even look into that some further, I mean, I don't have the codes in front of me, but I was under the impression that it's an existing building, has existing features in there, that it's allowable use, but.
I could chime in a little bit. So the water neutrality requirement does not apply to this application, it's not new development. So the conversation regarding water should be focused on the finding that's required that identifies that the proposed use would not make excessive demands on the provision of public services, including water supply. So that is one of the findings that's required to approve a use permit. So I think that is in the spirit of the water neutrality ordinance, as was mentioned, but the water neutrality requirement does not apply to this application, and the Public Works Department reviewed the request and determined that it would not be an excessive demand on the water supply.
Well, how would you define excessive? I mean, how much over the prior use would be, would be in the spirit of water neutrality? How much over the prior use would trigger some effort to, you know, to retrofit some toilet someplace, to balance it out, so that, you know, because it's, I don't know what you based your decision that it wasn't excessive on. Do you know how much more water's going to be used, or what?
The prior use, so if you were back before, there was just an olive tasting room?
No, it has to be the olive tasting room, that's the prior.
That's, the water neutrality requirement is based on the existing use, but it's, it's a broader review.
You want to know how much more is going to be used?
Than current.
Yeah.
But it's also, that's the water neutrality requirement. I think the direction of the, of the finding is overall ability to provide the service and the impact on that provision of services from the city's perspective.
And the water neutrality requirement only applies if it's new construction, so it's interesting, but it's irrelevant.
Well, I don't think it's irrelevant, I think it's.
I mean, it's, I understand your spirit, and your interest in protecting water, and I support that. However, when we're looking at this application, we still need to be respectful of the applicant and look at the zones and the ordinance that are applicable tonight in this hearing.
Okay, your point is well taken, and I agree. But even so, I would like to know from Public Works what you would consider excessive. So I would, I would, you know, I don't know what you based your decision on. You said you didn't think it would be excessive, so I don't know what you base that decision on.
She probably based it on the fact that it's going to be a dishwasher washing dishes, it's not going to have a kitchen where they're washing like pots and pans like they would in a restaurant. There's one bathroom with 32 seats, I mean, yes, people go to the ba, people go to the bathroom there now, I'm pretty sure, because, well, they're walking around drinking water and wine in St. Helena, so it's like, there's a dishwasher.
There's going to be a dishwasher.
That they're probably going to want like once or twice a day.
Well, that's, I mean, it's a process, I don't really want to argue, I mean, I have.
But that, to me, that's, a dishwasher is not excessive.
So staff, staff looks at this from the ability of the city to provide the water service and the impact on the overall capacity of our water services. So I don't know if Ms. Smithy wants to add to that.
It's an existing site, it's already been serviced with water, there's existing bathrooms onsite, or one now, I remember it when it was two, it was the lounge, and they must have had to wash the dishes back then when it was a bar. The new service, they have a dishwasher now. I understand what you're saying, but we didn't require a water neutrality report because it is not new construction, it's a new use for the site.
I understand. I guess I would just like to, I'll stop, but I guess I would just like to put out that it would be nice to know what, if there is any metric, or anything objective that is used to define excessive, or let's just take it out of the, I mean, I just don't like, it, you know, I mean, it seems disingenuous to be saying it's not excessive when there's no, even no definition of excessive, so, you know, I'm, I'm not going to push it here, but.
I think it's common sense, excessive is that they put like showers in.
Well, you know, yeah, it's okay, I'm done, but that's, it would be nice to get some kind of a sense of the thinking when that's being considered.
I like the project. I think St. Helena needs more, I mean, I've strolled across the state highway many a night at 8:00 or 8:30 p.m., and it's, I'm of no danger to myself or to oncoming traffic.
Have you ever laid down in the middle of Main Street, though?
No, and I will probably never do that in my life.
After the homecoming parade is a usually good time, too.
If you go in there and drink too much wine, you're just my type, so be careful.
Well, I mean, in the comparison to Hillsburg, I think it's completely apt. Hillsburg is a very interesting town right now, both from a business perspective and from a, you know, sort of a lifeblood of the community. I don't want to be Hillsburg, I'm very happy that we're St. Helena, but to encourage this sort of activity, I think is all to the better, and I'm pleased to hear about the prior use of the property. I didn't know that, it was after I arrived, and why not do something similar? I think it'd be a nice addition to our retail mix.
I have nothing really different to add, I support the project, and I concur that we're doing many things lately to make it less to do in town, and I think this is something that gives locals something to do and returns back to folks that keep wanting to hearken back to a previous time. There's been a lot of, a lot of good community spirits raised in that location, and it's happy to see, it'll be happening again.
And I do think that we do need to look at the water neutrality, as you've asked, Bobby, but I don't think in this case that we should carry it forth, being what's been there before. So I support the project, and I'm looking forward to walking down Main Street after 7:00 o'clock and seeing somebody beside myself. May I have a motion, please?
I move to determine that the project is exempt from the requirements of SEQA pursuant to Section 15301, Class 1, which exempts the operation, leasing, or minor alteration of existing facilities, and accept the required findings and approve a use permit amendment for 1351 Main Street.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
Vice Chair Parker?
Yes.
Commissioner Knudsen?
Yes.
Commissioner Monet?
Yes.
Chair Kistner?
Yes. Would you all like to stay or do, would you like to leave?
Do you want to hear about the other public bathrooms?
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Good luck. The next item is 5.2, PL 16074. The City of St. Helena Public Works Department requests design review approval in order to construct a public restroom facility at the park, a public parking lot located adjacent to Telegraph Alley between Oak Street and Money Way in the Central Business District.
It's, thank you.
Staff report, please.
Thank you, Chair Kistner. I'm going to give a brief staff report, and then I'm going to turn it over to Tobias Barr, who's the public manager from the Public Works, or the project manager from the Public Works Department, to talk about the details of the project. So the bathroom consists of two 88-square-foot block restroom buildings with an adjacent combined water fountain and water bottle filling station. The buildings will be constructed between the Telegraph Alley sidewalk and public parking lot on 1301 Money Way. The project is exempt from the requirements of SEQA pursuant to Section 15303, which exempts the construction of small structures. The property has a general plan and zoning designation of central business, and is previously in the, in the previous item. This district provides for retail, personnel services, offices, restaurants, hotels, motels, and the like. Staff believes that the project is consistent with the required design review criteria listed in the staff report, and therefore recommends that the Planning Commission determine that the project is exempt from the requirements of SEQA, and accept the required findings and approve design review for the project. With that, I will turn it over to Tobias Barr to detail the project.
Thank you, Aaron. Hello, everyone, I'm Tobias Barr, I'm a project manager in Public Works, and I appreciate the opportunity to present this project to you. So as Aaron explained, this is a public restroom located between Money Way and Oak Avenue. Avenue. You might be familiar with that parking lot. I do have some, some apps and things, and I provided a couple pictures up there for reference. So, the picture on the right there is the area, excuse me, the left is the area where the buildings are proposed to be constructed, and on the right there is the design we started with, which was something that Downtown Renaissance put together. And then the bottom is, is what we've kind of based our final design on, which is a restroom facility down at Stamford. So, certainly looking forward to input from the commission and from the public. We do want to encourage people to give us ideas and input on this project. Point it there. So, just, if you're not familiar, I'll, I think everyone probably is, but I'll go through a real quick background on this project. So, overall, the downtown corridor has been, you know, generally identified, I think, as not really having adequate public restroom facilities. It's a burden on a lot of the businesses. Folks have to walk all the way across to the, one of the parks to use the restroom. So, this is, this has been an area identified by the city and others as a good location that would be suitable for this facility. So, the downtown restaurant organization did take some action on this and put together a design. It was obviously not constructed, and in 2015, the city did identify funds in the five-year capital improvement program. And so, we took the project back from the downtown Renaissance, and in order to, for us to bring a design through construction, we, we had to do some different things to the plans. We wanted to make some changes. So, in 2016, we hired Valley Architects here in town to update the, what we call in Public Works the 50% plans, just because they didn't have all, all the details we really need for Public Works bidding. And so, the plans are currently in 90% and ready for some review and input. And we, I will say, we, as soon as, we may be able to get these out to bid this summer, but it's, it's possible that if the project is approved, we, you know, depending on constraints with construction and things, we, the project may not be built until 2018. But we're hoping if everything's approved, we can move forward quickly. So, here's a layout of the site. You see Money Way there on the right and Oak Street on the left, and then the, the parking area there to the southeast. And a couple, we have the two restroom facilities right now. They are a men's facility and a women's facility, but one of the comments we have received is to just make the bathrooms gender neutral. So, it'd be interesting getting some input on that. One of the issues that we've had and why it's taken us long, one of the reasons why it's taken us longer to bring this project back to the commission is the water bottle filling station, water fountain structure there, because it is actually on AT&amp;T property. So, we are working with AT&amp;T. They, they are working with us, and we, we believe that we'll be able to get an easement for that. But if we are not able to do that, we, you know, we'll, we'll plan on doing, putting the, the water fountain, water bottle filling station, you know, adjacent to the buildings on, on our property. Another thing I want to point out is we did preserve all the parking in that lot, and we are adding a van-accessible parking space, ADA space with the ADA ramp. So, here is the building elevations here. You can see the, the water bottle station there and the reference person standing there. One of the things I will point out is that top section is, is, that's covered in, in wood, but it is all natural ventilation. That's one of the things we've tried to incorporate in this project, is to, to make it simple, keep it simple, not have a facility that is going to use more energy or is going to have systems that Public Works continues to have to maintain. So, we did try and incorporate some natural ventilation there. So, underneath the, the wood fascia there is, is open, you know, screening. So, moving on, and you can kind of see some interior details. Our architect did kind of color in some of the tones that we're looking at here, and I'll get to that in a minute, but just as a reference, these are, I brought some of the materials here, and I will talk about those materials. We're pretty excited about this block. Here's just another close-up, close-up of the layout there. So, we do, we are incorporating dual-flush low-flow toilets, and we do have a waterless urinal, and I think we prefer to keep the waterless urinal in one of the, one, one of the sides or one of the buildings, whether or not it's, it's, you know, a unisex bathroom or not. And the other feature I'll point out here is the roofing material, which is, I have an example here. I can pass this around, but this is a prefabricated, it's called Cowall, and it's translucent. It allows, you know, in the day, it allows light to come out, so we won't need to use any lighting in the day. And it's, you know, fabricated for energy efficiency. It won't become an oven in there, and we'll also have the natural ventilation. So, this is another feature that we worked with the architect on. I don't know if, I'm happy to pass this around. It's pretty light if you want to look at it. Moving on. Some feedback here. I don't like that. So, getting into the block material, which we're really excited about, this, this block here was recommended from our architect, Valley Architects, Tom Farady, and this is a restroom facility at Stamford. And these blocks are made by a company actually in Napa, local company in Napa called Watershed Materials, and I'm going to talk about them a little bit. They have a really innovative, low-impact block that uses 50% less cement. And I, and again, these are the blocks that I have here. So, this is, this is a startup company, Watershed Materials. They, one of their sources of funding is actually the National Science Foundation because their process is really innovative, and it is a 50% decrease in, you know, energy and CO2 content from the manufacturing side. So, what they're doing is they're taking, you know, essentially locally sourced recycled aggregates that might be pulled off another job, and, you know, rather than using, you know, virgin mined aggregate as, as found, you know, in traditional concrete products. So, this, their process is able to use half the cement of ordinary concrete block, and as you might know, the cement, the Portland cement of concrete is, is really the biggest envi, has the biggest environmental impact on that product. So, this process that they've developed, which basically presses this material together, applying forces of about half a million pounds, if you can believe that, that machine applies that kind of force, and it, you know, basically lithifies the materials into man-made stone. And that's, you know, it comes out just like this, and there's all different colors depending on what the, what kind of materials you use, and they're able to eat, meet the ASTMC 90 standard, which is their standard for the masonry, concrete masonry products. So, we're excited about using this product. It's, it's a beautiful product. It's local materials. It's low-impact, and it's from a local company that is willing to give us the product, even though they're, they're kind of in startup mode. They, you know, I'm sure are not able to meet the same price point in a competitive space, but because we're local and we're interested in trying, trying their product, and they want to have a local building with the product they are going to meet, they told us they will meet the price point of, of a comparison standard CMU product. Of course, with any public restroom facility, we are concerned about graffiti and vandalism. You may not see it in St. Helena because our crews are so good at cleaning it up, but we, you know, anywhere where there's teenagers and you're going to have kids with Sharpies and everything else. So, we actually went out to the Watershed Materials and tried a couple different coating products, glaze coating products, that are specifically designed for these kind of coatings so you can remove, easily remove, you know, vandalism. And so, we did have really good success with that. So, the, this is Carlos Arribas, you, you may know him. He's our Public Works Operations Manager, and spent, I don't know, nine or so-plus years cleaning graffiti and things up himself on the cruise. So, he, he knows how to deal with what they do now, and, and he was very satisfied with these coating products, that we would be able to protect this product. So, anyway, this is another process that we've gone through. I just wanted to point out. So, you could see, you know, we, we kind of marked up these two different products. They both actually worked excellent. I think we're going to go with the Sherman Williams product because it's just easier to apply. But basically, with some, some heavy-duty citrus cleaner, we were able to remove the graffiti with a little bit of Elber grease, as you can kind of see here in the pictures. What else? Some other sustainable things we're, we're going for here. I mentioned dual-flush toilets, waterless urinal. We're trying to go gray-water-to-landscape from at least the water bottle filling station, water fountain. We are planning for electric vehicle charging station. I mentioned the translucent roofing products, so we can have natural light in there and not have to use lighting during the day. And then all the rest of the lighting, of course, will be LED, I think, which is all code now anyway, but we will have LED lighting, and we hope to improve the lighting in that lot overall. And that'll be, at least around the building, will be motion sensor, photo sensor.
What?
Motion and, and photo sensor, so it'll only turn on in the, in the dark and when it detects motion. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions from, from the commission and the public. I do have some, some full-size plans here, too, if anyone would like to look at those. Thank you.
Anyone have any question? David?
I do. I'd like to put this in the context of all the public restrooms in St. Helena. I'm actually only familiar with two. There's the Crane Park Restrooms, and then there's the Railroad Avenue. Are there others?
Right, there's some next to City Hall there.
Also City Hall.
That are in pretty bad, you know, they're, they're definitely older, these restrooms. I don't think anyone seeks those out to use them.
Okay, so, there's sort of three public restrooms in the, in the town. Lyman Park, Railroad Avenue, and Crane Park. I'm not familiar with the two near Main Street, but I am very familiar with the Crane Park Restrooms, which are really depressing, right? The doors don't shut. There's a low, it appears a low-flush urinal in the men's that doesn't actually, it's not supposed to be low-flush, it just doesn't flush. And the, there's no water pressure in the sink, et cetera. What have we learned from sort of the depressing current toilet situation in, public toilet situation in St. Helena to help inform this design? And it'd be interesting to also perhaps learn some lessons that are putting in this design to perhaps retrofit or to improve the other existing toilets, because it's, it's not very, it's, you know, it's, it's tough for our town to be welcoming with those sorts of facilities.
Right, right. So, I have included a, a couple of our operations staff who have been here a long time and, cared for those facilities for a long time, and, and we did incorporate, you know, equipment and things that they feel that they can maintain. One of the things that we're talking about, too, is, is putting, you know, essentially locking them at night with an automated, you know, keypad or something where we could potentially give out the code so people could still have access, but otherwise it would, you know, say lock at eight o'clock and not open again till 6:00 AM or something like that. So, we did talk through the design with, with the architect and our, our parks crews who maintain those, and we have chosen materials for countertops and mirrors and, and sinks and, and things like that, that they have confidence in. Another, and I can't, I'm not sure what's going on with the water pressure there. I don't, I don't know. I know, you know, the city has put a lot of these facilities in on a, on a shoestring, and maybe they just put in a tiny line that they had to. I know there's not a lot of water out there. I think it's wells, so they had to bring in potable water. Anyway, I'm just guessing, but we do have, you know, water main there, so we know we'll have good water pressure, and we know, you know, these new generation of products are certainly a lot better than, than what's been, anything that's been put in the past. They just get better and better every year. I know, you know, the waterless urinals, when they first came out, they were, they were pretty bad, but, you know, we're in like a third, fourth generation waterless urinal now, and I did talk through that with the crews, and, and they said, yeah, let's give it a try. If, if it really doesn't work, we'll just, we'll just take it out and we'll just have the toilet there. So, that's, that's kind of what we've talked to, talked about, and, and, you know, make sure we've included these guys who, who are maintaining these facilities so they can tell us what is reasonable and what is not reasonable.
Yeah, I'm sure the current facilities are really, you know, difficult to maintain, and also they're aged and, you know, et cetera. Also, if we, if we went to gender neutral, is it typical to continue to have urinals, or how does that work?
I, you know, I don't know if there's, if there's any, you know, law or anything that says you can't, but it was just a, a comment, you know, from, from the males in, in the room when we were going through this, oh, why don't we just keep it in there? That way, you know, the guys can still use it.
I think it's a good idea to keep it.
And, you know, it would reduce, it would reduce the water use, at least, you know, some.
But, oh, yeah, I had some concern about when you talked about waterless urinals, especially since there's not going to be any electrified circulation fan of any kind or air conditioning or heating. It's going to be all natural. And in the summer, it's really hot, and I was just thinking in terms of olfactory comfort, what the waterless urinals would be like in the summer, but I think they probably would be better than not having them, because, and that means splashing and all kinds of things going on, especially if people have been drinking, which a lot of people will have been. So, anyway, I, I just, wouldn't, wouldn't waterless urinals be an invitation for unpleasant odors in the 105-degree summers that we have? I wonder, were you thinking about that?
Yeah, you know, I haven't put a lot of thought into that, because, you know, these facilities are cleaned pretty regularly, but it's, it's a valid point. You know, they do, they do have products in, in the toilets, you know, that do, it will be plumbed with water, so I, and I will need to check on, on the, some of the models we're looking at, but I know some of them, because they are plumbed with water, they do flush with water every, ever so often. I think you can kind of actually change the programming. So, that might be something we, we need to consider, is make sure we plum water to it and, and get a unit that will, you know, flush every hour or something, a gallon down, down there or something like that.
Is it possible to get a, a manual option so that if someone wanted to flush themselves, they could, yeah?
I'll, I'll look into that. Yeah, these are definitely the kind of comments we're seeking, so thank you, yeah.
You can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we're just looking at design review. Is that not correct?
Isn't that part of the design?
He's writing it down.
I don't quite know if the function of the urinal would be something that's considered part of the design, but Tobias is taking notes, and we did ask for input, general input, as well as design review input on the project.
I, again, I really like the idea of gender neutral, and I, would it be possible to have both of them, both sides, gender, gender neutral?
Yeah, yep.
And to have a urinal in both of them? Why only one? I don't understand.
Well, we, the plans are that way now because we've, are just now pivoting to a general neutral before we had men and the women's.
I see. Well, from a design perspective, I, it just seems more symmetrical to have one in each one, so, okay.
I don't know, Bobby. I don't know why we're not going with the more French style and just having holes in the ground.
I thought that was Chinese.
Why was that not an option here?
That's what happened to us in China.
How, how much more would it be to have a, an electrified fan in each place? Not, not, not an air conditioner or a heater, but it's cold in the winter and, and hot in the summer, but at least the option of a, of a fan that people could turn on or that would go on with the light, or, I don't know. Is that possible, or?
You know, we, I don't know if it, what was driving that for us was, you know, the maintenance and, and that, because those fans, they get left on or they short out and they fail. So, that was one of the reasons why the architect did have, you know, really an, essentially kind of an open-air design above the block wall.
And how does that work in Stamford, at the Stamford location, when they have the open air and like in comparison to our...
So, and I think that's something that, where's that photo? So, you could see here, you know, you could, on the, on the left especially, that's all just screening there, and we started with that and decided, well, let's cover it up a little bit.
But do you know how that has functioned with like the smell and the heat and the cold and...
It's hot as we do.
Because, yeah, well, sometimes, not as hot.
I'm not, yeah, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I, that's a, that's a concern of mine, because it's really, really hot in the summer here, and it's, I mean, I'm just thinking in terms of having a welcoming place, you know, and a comfortable place.
I, you know, I did ask the architect about that ventilation, because I, I started as an advocate of having mechanical ventilation in there for those kind of reasons, and, you know, he was confident that there'd be enough air circulation, but we didn't do a study or anything like that on it. But, you know, he has a lot of experience, so I took, I'm taking his word for it at this point, that it's adequate ventilation.
Can you put timers on fans so that they couldn't stay on?
You, you can. It's just another thing that's, that's going to break or get vandalized or... or.
I hear you.
And all of those things that are being suggested add cost to the project, which make it?
Which is all very expensive. It's, it's very expensive.
Have this happen, it needs to be affordable to the city, both in construction and maintenance.
It looks like, it's costing about $900 a square foot as it is.
But it's supposed to be?
I could build a palace for that.
I thought it was supposed to be a high-class, a high-class bathroom to stay with St. Helena standards of comfort and?
I think that's enough, Bobby.
I have another question. Is, is the, is the materials used at Stanford, is that the folks from Napa?
That's correct, yeah.
Oh, okay, interesting. So it's nice, and have you toured that facility? Have you been down to Stanford?
I have not, I have not. I've seen a lot of pictures of it, and it's been in different architecture magazines and.
And it looks like our design is very similar to that design.
Right, we have, we've borrowed their, their block pattern.
Yeah, and possibly the, the venting, the natural venting solution.
Right, yeah, the concept, right, of the ventilation, yep. But our roof is different.
Trace, do you have any questions?
No, I think it's been well thought out. I think that you're being respectful of the environment and respectful of the budget. And it's been a long time in coming, so I'm glad to see us getting to this point.
Ms. Parker?
Well, I was just on my phone looking at the average temperatures to Stanford to St. Helena, and they're very comparable, so if Stanford doesn't have a problem, I think that we'll be good. I'm good with the project.
Thank you very much. Any public comment?
Good evening, Rodney Freevich. I'm chairman of the St. Helena Renaissance Committee, and our committee has been involved with numerous items in trying to improve St. Helena's downtown and streets, and ultimately this is the public restrooms here for several years. We had, before Tobias came on board and several others, in fact, probably most people at the city management level at this point, we had approvals and we actually had permits in our hand to build this public restroom at this space. This space was, was, was selected by a group of local architects and, and people in the, in the Citizens Committee that said, let's find a location for where we can put some public restrooms, and this is the location that we came up with. And don't get me wrong, I'm fully supportive, we're, we're going with the public restrooms right now. And I'm happy that Tobias has taken this project and gone with it. But I do think it might be helpful to get a little bit of background as to where we, how we got to here. This was a private project to, from the Renaissance Committee to get this project done and built. We got approval from a previous, several eons ago, previous city council to, for $100,000 towards this project, and then they, we were going to raise the rest of that through donations. And in this community, donations for this kind of a project are probably pretty easy to, to raise. I mean, this community steps forward when it needs to, to come to projects like this. So we felt pretty comfortable that we could build this for about $250,000. Not sure where we're at now, but I've heard the number's closer to 400, is that?
We don't have an estimate yet. I don't have anything that's.
And part of the reason of the change of, of the cost of that is, and remember, we actually had the building permits in our hand stamped and signed and structural engineer, in fact, I think the structural engineer is the same as, has done this, and we actually recommended to Tobias to use Valley Architects. I've known Tom Farady for years, actually helped build his house, I don't know how many years ago. I've been a building contractor in this valley since 1975. The, when, when the city's $100,000 evaporated and we came upon a new budget, that money was taken away, and we, we were not able to even start the project. We did do some pot test, pothole testing for finding out locations of gas and pipes and sewer pipes out in Oak Avenue. So we were able to get that information and help the city in moving forward as they're done now. And some other items we, we were working at at the same time. Can I keep going, or am I done?
Go ahead.
Thank you. We were, at the city engineer that we were working with at that time, we believed that, where we had the drinking fountains and the dog filling stations and so forth that are currently apparently on the AT&amp;T property, we believed in going through the maps and the documents that those were on the city property. So that's new information to us to see where that is, and I, hopefully that they'll come to an agreement and you can get that done, because I think it's a good location for putting those utilities. When the $100,000 evaporated and, and the project was taken away, we were very happy when, when the city finally came back and said, we will put this project back under, the entire project back under the city's goals of, of projects to do. However, it triggered the prevailing wage concept. So we were asked to bring the permits that we had back to the city and return them back, which we did. And what it triggered is, is that the plans needed to be far more detailed in order to go out to bid. So it went out to bid, as I understand it, with architectural groups. I'm glad Tom Farady was able to get that, that bid as a local architect. But now it's going to also go back out to bid to contractors and so forth, and that's where, and it goes on, back under bid, under the prevailing wage. So that's what increases the cost of this project significantly. So I don't know if there's a way to, to, to change that at this point, that's, that's something Tom would have to, to comment on that. But it would be sure be nice to be able to find ways to reduce the cost of this project. It shouldn't cost that much. It's, it's, it's outrageous, in my opinion, that what these little projects cost when you have to go out and, under the public works process. But if it is what it is, I, I'm still 100% supportive of what it's going, I'm supportive of what Tobias has done in getting this project done to this point. And we certainly need some public restrooms, and I believe this is the best location in this town for that.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, planning commissioners, I'm Wayne Armstrong, 1339 Main Street. I'd just like to, first of all, with all due respect to my friend Rodney, say that this is about design review. The funds thankfully have been approved, the location has been chosen, the plans are there, so we are so close to this really very needed, clean, lovely, public restroom facility that is central to the downtown business quarter. My partner Marcus and I came here 22 years ago, and we have been talking about this for 22 years. My friend Rodney's been here much longer than that, and I know he's been talking about it longer than I've been here. So this is not a new thing, it's just a needed thing. And so I'm just here to underscore what I hope is your own opinion, which is, yes, it is time to do this. It's a lovely design, it's thoughtful. As I look at this Stanford design and the stacked stone, as it relates, for example, to the beautiful building that we're sitting in today, I like the reference of how this modern design with the organic materials looks very appropriate with our beautiful historical downtown buildings. I think it'll be a welcome place for visitors and locals alike. So I just encourage all of you to give this your support, and let's get this thing done. Thank you.
Pam Simpson, I'm going to speak for a moment. First of all, as a mom who brought up two kids in this, in this town, and took them to the Harvest Festival and couldn't change their diapers anywhere on Main Street, so, and Sarah knows that, because she was my nanny for many of those years, but, you know, you can't do that. There's no restrooms, and so we're thrilled that the restrooms are happening, because...
That's why I rocked a station wagon.
Yeah, that's, I knew you did it, yeah. So we're thrilled that there's going to be restrooms in this location and that, that this project's moving forward. I'm not going to go into too much detail, because Rodney did, but what I want to say about the design is, I think you're right, you know, I think in the beginning we thought it would be this beautiful, you know, with a vanity and a beautiful mirror and all of that, and we were slowly educated by the Public Works Department about what can be realistic, especially when you're dealing with people who, you know, will vandalize and will do graffiti and, and that. And while we would love it to be this beautiful, you know, neat bathroom, it, I think the design that they came up with is very, very nice for what we're going to be able to get for the money. And I also think that it's eco-friendly, and I think it's really a great compromise on, you know, what we would have liked, which is, you know, this would be great with outlets and all of that kind of thing, and we realized that's just not possible. This is what's possible, this is what's realistic, and it's very nice the way it is. So we love the materials, we think they've done a great job of picking it out. Tobias has worked really hard. We're thrilled that Carlos is happy, I've never seen anybody so excited to remove graffiti, and he was thrilled when, he's like, it works! And it was really fun to watch him be that excited. The reason we want it gender neutral is for a couple of reasons. Obviously, women have to wait in line longer, and so to have gender neutral means that women usually will use either bathroom. Obviously, it is the progressive thing to do and is respectful. And then also, we want changing tables on both sides. We think it's very important, and so in a gender-neutral bathroom. I don't think we, you know, whatever you decide with the urinal, it's up to you. We did have some male input that, you know, that was a nice addition, and so if you want to put it in both, or put it in one, or take it out, I don't think we have, we don't care. We just want the restrooms, and what we would like is to have them be gender-neutral and to make sure that there's changing tables on both sides, so that the wait. And then the lock at night is, is important. We think that if you are downtown Main Street, you know, if you're actually running around on Main Street after 9:00, you're either in the restaurant or you're at the cameo. And so therefore, those do have restaurants, those customers, those visitors, those locals have, have restrooms. So trying to, you know, keep them clean and keep them nice, having that lock on it where it would lock it to, at 6:00 or 8:00 at night is, is appropriate. So, thank you very much, and we're thrilled that this has come to fruition. Thanks.
Any more public comment? Public comment is closed. Would you like to start the discussion, David?
I'm super excited. I, having a public facility, a new public facility that is easy to maintain, and I want to, you know, give my thanks to Mr. Barr for shepherding this, and, and also to Public Works. My earlier comments were dealt, the hand were dealt, and so I really appreciate all the work that the city's done to maintain toilets that are even in unfortunately poor shape. I'm hoping that this can be a model for the improvement of the other toilets in town, but this is, I'm really supportive of this project.
Trace?
I echo those comments, and again, given the history around this project, and I'll, and I want to really thank Renaissance for getting this thing going and passing it off to the city. So again, there's been a lot of hands in this program and this project and this idea for a long time, and I hope to see it come to fruition. So I support this iteration and hope to see it move on.
Sarah?
I'm in full support of the project. We need bathrooms.
Monette?
I'm in support, but I would like to get some information from Mr. Brown with respect to something that was mentioned by the speakers. And my question is, is the prevailing wage process required when the city owns the property and/or is putting some money into it? In both those cases, or in just one?
In both those cases.
Okay, so even if the city didn't own, if they were going to put any money into prevailing wage, okay.
Yes, and they have, as with almost everything in, in this world of municipal law, now, there's a huge body of law that the Department of Industrial Relations maintains and implements in this, along this line, but generally the, the rule is, is if the city is providing money for a project, it, it will be subject to prevailing wage. There are many exceptions to that, but that's a rule of thumb.
Okay, so those building permits were probably erroneously offered. You don't know, okay. All right, so I mean, I'm in support of the project, and that being the case, you know, I, but someone mentioned Heelsburg, I know, I called Heelsburg Public Works and asked them if they had public restrooms, and they, they, and this is, I'm supportive of the project, I just want to say this while we're here, that they had made a deal with the, one of the hotels there and other buildings to use their bathrooms, and there was an exchange of some kind. And just for, maybe we could use more than one public restroom facility if in the future we, we could do something that would incorporate the cooperation and the talents that are in the town, because I want to put a shout out to Rodney for, you know, for being part of that process, because when you're in a town, you know, you can, you can really feel a vibe when a town is pulling together. And so that kind of project, I think, is really, is really important to do if it's possible. So I'm hoping maybe in the future for more of these bathrooms, we can do something that involves the community more. But, you know, what you've just told me being the case, I'm totally in support of this, although I'm wondering if, if there was any thought of surveillance cameras since, especially since this is going to be a filling station for the, for electric cars, but for the bathroom itself, is there, was there any thought of a surveillance camera?
You know, I, I did forget to mention that, so thank you for bringing it up. So we're not putting a camera in, but we're going to make sure when we have, you know, the sidewalk ripped up and everything under construction, that we put conduit there. So if there is a need or if there is a program that the police adopt, that we can easily put in a camera there, so we can have that.
Thanks. So I'm, I support the program.
I'm supportive, I'm in support of the project. I'm, I'm a little appalled at the, at the cost of it, but I don't think that's in the purview of what we're talking about tonight. I, I just want to say that supposedly the shape that the city's in with money, I think this is a very, very large expenditure for, for less than, what did I figure, less than 50 or 60 square feet. I think that's very expensive. But I am in support of this project, I think we need it.
Could I just clarify something? So we, we don't have an estimate for this yet, an estimate has not been done, so we, we do not know the costs. I just don't want to start any rumors. So we, we could very well come in within our original budget. We'll certainly, we'll certainly do our best.
Thank you. May I have a motion, please?
I move to, I move to approve staff recommendations.
Second?
On this application.
Second.
With the comments, I mean, do we have to add that, with the comments?
I'd like to add one thing. I, I agree with Ms. Simpson, I believe that we should make these gender neutral, and I would like those in the, in the.
And the changing, in both, changing tables in both places. But I think you got that, yeah. Do I have to say that?
You do have to change tables, sorry. Forgot to mention that.
Okay.
So should I say that, in the motion? With those changes?
If there are, if there are specific comments that you would like incorporated into your motion, it would be appropriate to mention those now.
Okay, so with the changing tables, the water neutral, and I would like to see...
Gender neutral.
Gender, excuse me, sorry. And urinals in each, in both? And, oh, no? Well, I mean, that's what, was there a problem with that?
The design doesn't currently incorporate urinals in both, and that, and they're at 90% planned, so that could significantly revise the entire plumbing design, so it may be appropriate if the commission desires that Public Works explore the use of urinals in both, rather than a requirement, given that the design is before you, that, that may be an element of the design, but it may also affect the overall budget and timeline for the project.
Okay, that's fine with me, unless someone else wants to, yeah, okay. So that's the motion.
Second.
Did that cover it, you guys? Yeah, okay.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Monette?
Yes.
Vice Chair Parker?
Yes.
Commissioner Knudsen?
Yes.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
Chair Kistner?
Yes. Thank you very much. The next item, 5.3 PL 17019, Dehoff Residence has been continued to a date uncertain, or to date certain, June 20th, in the next meeting.
Chair Kistner, it would be appropriate to open a public hearing for that item in case anyone came tonight, because it was publicly noticed.
Okay. Any public comment on this? Public comments closed. Thank you, Aaron. Our scheduled matters, we're going to have a discussion of discretionary project development review process. You're on, Mr. How- development review process. You're on, Mr. House.
Thank you, Chair Kistner, members of the commission. As identified, the item before the commission tonight is a discussion of the discretionary review process for, or the development review process for discretionary applications. The planning commission requested a discussion item be added. That is interesting. Never seen that one ever. Sorry. Requested a discussion item be added, allowing staff to present the process for the review of discretionary permit applications. And so that's the item before this commission tonight. And to facilitate an understanding of this, staff is going to start with the definition of discretionary permits or discretionary applications. It's interesting. So discretionary permit is any permit requiring decision-making body, such as the planning commission, to exercise judgment prior to its approval. These generally require approval from the planning commissioner of the city council here in St. Helena. They do require environmental review and determination be made under SEQA. And also often require the decision to be made at a noticed public hearing. These decisions can be appealed. They're often appealed to the city council here. And there are no license or design credentials required for the submission of discretionary permit applications. So it's just an interesting distinction. And then conversely, ministerial applications or permits are essentially ministerially or automatically granted if a project is determined to meet all established standards set forth in the general plan and adopted ordinances. There's no public hearing required. The permits may not be conditioned. And there are often very specific license or certification requirements for the plans that are prepared for the issuance of ministerial permit applications. And a building permit is an example of a ministerial permit. If you meet the requirements of the building code, you are, we are required to issue the building permit. So just to describe the process, pre-application meetings are essentially where these start. They can be very informal with just a phone call from somebody saying, "I'm interested in, you know, building a shed on my property," all the way through, you know, someone bringing in their architect to start with, the city staff, typically the planner meets with them first, to just discuss concepts around what discretionary entitlements will be required for a project, and obviously what design expectations are for the city. In some instances, staff will determine that the scope and the nature of the project would warrant a pre-application neighborhood meeting. So that's intended to be a meeting with the residents in the immediate vicinity of the property. This process is not formally identified in our zoning code. It's something that staff has implemented in certain instances with the goal to increase transparency and public involvement with the development review process. After the pre-application meeting occurs, so whether that's an informal one with the planner or whether that actually is a noticed meeting with adjacent residents, discretionary applications, so that's design review, use permits, those types of things are filed with the city. The applicable fees are paid. So you have to pay your fee when you submit. And staff, well, it's interesting to note that these applications have to be signed by the property owner. And they also require an indemnification clause, essentially identifying that the applicant will identify the city should there be a lawsuit filed after any decision. And this, the application of a discretionary application triggers what the state law calls a shot clock, a 30-day requirement that we respond to the applicants within 30 days to either deem their project complete, meaning we have all the information needed in order to review it and process it, or to identify incompleteness issues. Within that timeframe, the city staff, the planner acts as the project manager, refers all the materials out to the various internal city departments. That includes Public Works, the fire department, the building department, and then the planner reviews it themselves. Obviously, the building and fire code or departments review their applications for fire code requirements. Public Works has a much broader scope. Ms. Smithy's over here. And they generally are reviewing the applications for compliance with the infrastructure design standards. So that's the sidewalks, the streets, the size of your sewer line, the size of your water line. Do you have all the, the, basically the protection measures? So a double detector valve, I'm sorry, double check valve, I'm sorry. Water neutrality is primarily managed by Public Works. The water efficient landscaping requirements, so Welo, and then onsite stormwater management. So all your stormwater, there's a lot of requirements regarding the treatment and the capture of stormwater. You're not allowed to have your water cross your property lines, on your neighbor's property. All those things are reviewed by Public Works. The planning department then starts looking at the projects' materials for compliance with the zoning code, the general plan, growth management, housing affordability requirements that they apply, all those things. And then through this process, the planner also refers the materials out to any outside agencies. So Caltrans, California Fish and Wildlife Department, Native Plant Society, if there's concerns over sensitive plant species. And all of this occurs within about a three-week timeframe with all the comments coming back to the planner with enough time for them to get their, their input out to the applicant within 30 days. This all occurs within the 30-day shot clock period. And I, we have put together this discretionary permit process, and that's gone on to the planning website. So it's essentially a summary of the staff report that was provided to the planning commission. And then also, I apologize for the quality of the flowchart that was provided in the packet. I didn't have a lot of time to edit it to make it a little bit more professional. But however, this version has also been uploaded to the website. So it's an effort to streamline people's understanding of the process. After all of these comments, or the plans are reviewed by all these departments, comments are compiled into what's called an issues or completeness letter that's sent out to the applicant, which either says your project is complete and we're ready to move it forward with staff report, SEQA analysis, and ultimately prepare it for a decision, or we need X, Y, and Z additional materials, or your project needs to be modified in order to meet A, B, and C zoning criteria or general plan criteria, et cetera. At that time, the ball's in the applicant's court. They then can take essentially as long as they need to address those issues. However, we typically ask folks to respond within 60 days of getting that letter with their resubmital or indicate that they're going to need more time. And then we would formally freeze the project. And that allows staff to know that they're not going to be spending time on that project within that time period. And people can request a freeze for any number of reasons. We don't typically get involved in deciding yes or no on a freeze. If someone requests that it be frozen, we allow them to do so. Alternatively, they may see that the number of issues we've identified, that they're not willing to address them. And they can withdraw their application. Or they can say that they don't agree with staff's opinion and they would like us to take them forward for a decision at that point. Typically, that's when staff would recommend denial of a project. It's not common. Most applicants would rather work with staff in order to be able to reach a recommendation for approval. Not all choose to do so, but that is essentially the process. The resubmital, after the applicants have addressed all those issues, they then compile another plan set, submit it to the city, same process under the original review. That gets sent around to all the other departments to make sure that the issues that they've identified have been addressed. And then also that the way that they've identified them, or I'm sorry, addressed them, hasn't created new issues. And so we do another, essentially, three-week review process. And then the comments are provided back to the planner. At this point, generally, the issues are resolved and the planner can begin to move the process forward for discussing an agenda date with the planning commission. They start working on the staff report. Or they begin the SEQA process. If there's, if it's clear that the project does not meet an exemption, or if additional information's needed in order to make a determination if the project's exempt or not. If it's exempt, obviously, that moves on the staff report, preparation resolution, preparation of the packet for the agenda for the planning commission to review. If it is not exempt, then that begins the preparation of initial study. It is uncommon here in St. Helena for staff to prepare these initial studies. We typically rely on third-party SEQA consultants just because of our limited staffing. That preparation process is funded by the developer, but it's managed by the city. So it's interesting and important to note that SEQA documents and SEQA determinations are the cities to make. So even if a third-party SEQA consultant prepares the initial study, staff has the final say on whether it is adequate or not prior to bringing it to the commission, who then ultimately adopt it or ask for additional information. And the commission or the city council are the, the decision-making bodies of the lead agency under SEQA. It is your authority that decides whether a project's environmental analysis is adequate and meets the intent of the requirements under SEQA. So should the project be approved by the planning commission? Obviously, you're very familiar with that process. Then there is an appeal period with all discretionary applications. That's a 14-day timeframe. And in St. Helena, if it's a staff-level determination, of which there are very few, then those are appealed to the planning commission. If it's a planning commission decision, then those are appealed to the city council. After that appeal period, applicants may submit for their building permits. Similarly, you submit multiple plan sets for the building permit. That gets referred around to all those departments who then reviewed it. And the planner has to make sure that the conditions of approval are met with the design. The Public Works Department then also ensures that all of the conditions that they ask the applicant to, to document compliance with are actually done in the building permit submittal. So building permit plan sets are a lot more detailed because not only do they have to show how they comply with all the requirements of the building code, but then that's where a lot of the stormwater design criteria get much more specific. And then again, the planner is reviewing that for compliance with the approved design in a design review setting, or that certain mitigation requirements are met if there was mitigation under SEQA. So that is a summary of the process. And this, again, flowchart is available on the website. It essentially describes what I talked about. And I'm happy to answer any questions, if there should be any. But generally, for a typical project that is brought before the planning commission here, it's within staff's basically court for about 90 days. And a lot of the additional time that it takes to get projects from submitted before the commission is typically in the applicant's hands. So that's a summary of the process. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Do you have any questions?
I was wondering what's the most common place in this process for, for staff and/or applicants to call the psychiatric emergency hotline? Because I sort of wanted to, just listening to you. You don't have that down.
I have a question, Noah. Would it be appropriate for anyone from the planning commission to attend the pre-application meeting?
So we have had discussions with the city council, and Ms. Coburnstein's here, requesting the creation of a pre-application meeting with the planning commission. Not having thought about it, just right here, having one planning commissioner may give a false impression one way or the other to an applicant. However, having a pre-application meeting, especially on design, prior to submittal with a decision-making body is an excellent process. And it does allow applicants the ability to kind of ask for some design cues that the planning commission might be looking forward to with a formal submittal, or maybe some issues that the planning commission would want to be vetted fully prior to an application being submitted. So that is a very common thing. And it is a, it's not uncommon to have that process. Our code doesn't have it currently. But staff does anticipate looking at that as we look into the zoning code update.
I think we need to look at that and.
Yeah. And I will say, some larger projects have gone to the city council, a study session to kind of take their temperature. Unfortunately, it, there's not a lot of direction that can be provided by the city council in that format because the council doesn't want to come out one way or another for a project because then they could preclude themselves from being able to vote on it in the future. However, if you created a structured format where the expectation was that certain direction was granted, that would allow, I think, the planning commission more leeway in how they discussed that project or voiced their concerns. And obviously, when we do that, we'll work with the city attorney's office to make sure that we put the appropriate.
I think that could streamline somewhat what goes on here.
Chair Kistner, could you please turn your microphone on?
What I said is, I think that could streamline what goes on here.
I'm not sure I'm understanding it. But, you know, I have no objection to that. But I'm, possibly in addition, that sounds like it'd be a good idea, especially for the applicant. But when I was thinking on page 48 of 56, just before discretionary decision, if there could be inserted in there, a pre-discussion review meeting with the applicant for complicated and, you know, for these, these applications that have binders full of materials that we get on a Thursday or Friday, and then are at the decision-making place on a Tuesday, I was thinking that at the request of the majority of the planning commission, that we could have a preliminary meeting before the decision-making meeting with the materials and the applicant to go over and clarify some of our questions before the decision-making meeting. And I thought that's what we had also talked about possibly having. And I don't know what your thoughts are on that. And I, that's what, that's what would have been really helpful with the CIA and the, you know, to be able to meet with them and just take time, just for that, to review it. So what are your thoughts on that?
Well, staff is definitely aware of the difficulty in kind of just wading through that voluminous amount of information on some of these projects. And we've decided internally that any project that's of substantive size of analysis, we are going to provide that information to the planning commission much more ahead of the current process, which only gives you essentially a weekend to get through it. Having a formalized process would require zoning code amendment to dictate what that would be. But we're happy to explore it once we get to doing the zoning code update, obviously with input from the city attorney's office.
Yeah, I was thinking in terms of having applicant there so we could ask a lot of questions there. Instead of having a regular scheduled meeting with other people waiting and so forth, where we really might want a lot of time. But it sounds like you're in the process of exploring it more, or?
Well, we definitely recognize that it's not. You have to spend all of your time for those three days looking at that amount of material. And frankly, it's not productive because after a certain amount of time, your eyes cross. So we do recognize that. And we're trying to institute some steps in order to get our work done sooner. So then we can get it to the commission sooner to give more time for decision-makers. And we've been trying to do that with the appeal that's going to the city council. We had the benefit of already doing a lot of the analysis. So we were able to forward the documents that the commission saw to the council to give them more time with them.
But having it earlier, it's still in its finished form. So it doesn't allow the applicant time to change and save money. I mean, we're, I have struggled and have been, you know, disappointed in our outcomes on this board have often been when the applicant has spent a year and tens of thousands of dollars with our experts. And then we have a panelist who determines that they disagree with the experts. And having a week or 10 days or a month on that information wouldn't still change or wouldn't give that applicant an opportunity to make material changes when they're a lot less expensive, when they're not that far down engineering plans and everything else. So I think that adding that step at the beginning is productive for everyone concerned. I think adding time at the end gives us a little more time, but it's not going to give the applicant any opportunity to get ahead of objections. And I think that's where we're, that's where we've been unfair. And I think we've made some bad decisions. And we've put some people through ringers that really don't fare well, where we could improve that process getting involved earlier. Having more time with existing application doesn't help.
I don't disagree with that at all. I totally agree with that. But what I've noticed is that if it's a really big project, we could end up needing more time and having to continue it anyway. So that's all I'm saying, is that if we could have, you know, a meeting before to kind of answer our questions, it might even expedite it, you know.
So, yeah, I concur with what's been said, particularly Chairperson Kistner, your comment and.
On the pre-application.
Yeah. Commissioner Sweeney also sort of seconding that or thirding that idea. I also just want to make a brief comment. Thank you very much, Planning Director House, for putting this all together and your staff as well. So I want to commend you guys on a really professional approach. And I think it really bodes well for our city. Thank you.
I'd also ask them if you'd do a SEQA EIR thing for us.
Great idea. So say, this was at the request of Chair Kistner. So she gets all the credit. But yeah, we will, we are happy to put together a, kind of a land use 101 presentation, especially given that we may have some new seats or some new faces on the commission, and also a SEQA 101. So we will look into that after the first of the year, or, sorry, first of the fiscal year.
All right, Mr. House, do you have another departmental report?
I do have a departmental report. And that was maybe a nice segue that I set myself up for here. As many, I'm sure all of you are aware, this is Sarah Parker's last commission meeting. After six and a half years, she has decided to, I won't steal any of your thunder, but leave the commission for, I'm sure, greener pastures at sometimes.
At least she thinks so.
Yes, exactly. But we do just present you with a certificate of appreciation for all your hard work. But we do just present you with a certificate of appreciation for all your hard work. And it says. City of St. Helena certificate of appreciation is hereby presented to Sarah Parker in recognition of her outstanding service, dedication, and lasting contribution to the City of St. Helena Planning Commission from January 2011 to May 2017. Thank you very much.
You know, there's an opening on the planning commission in the town I'm moving into, because you know I already left. I just wanted to say, thank you so much. This has been just such an experience to really be able to get involved in the City of St. Helena on a real nitty-gritty basis, and I just so appreciate all of the comments that people have been giving at me, and just, just feels really nice, and I know that the city's in good hands, and so, not too worried about it, hence why I'm not selling my house. So, not completely jumping ship, but I just want to say thank you, and I'll miss you all, and, well, I'll be back in October, so I'll try to see you all then.
Do we have an agenda forecast?
There is an agenda forecast. It includes the updated, kind of prioritization of the projects that we discussed at the last meeting. Staff's been working with Chair Kistner, and we will be presenting that to the city council as a part of the planning commission presentation to the council at their second meeting in June. Yeah, so if you see the citywide planning commission assignments prioritized by staff from the planning commission, the third heading, there's a lot of work under number five, which is the zoning code update, the comprehensive zoning code update. I will say, staff has been trying to focus on the general plan update and the EIR, and I do have a nearly completed draft of the EIR here with me tonight. I didn't want to take any, it's not quite ready yet, but it is close, and I just wanted to let everyone know that we are working hard to get this done. Staff had originally committed to getting it done in April and out, and due to just all the challenges that are faced with the department, we haven't been able to do that. But this does have a May 2017 date on it, and I don't plan on changing that. And so, while it may be issued in June, I do expect to get this EIR on the street in the relatively near term.
Could next, could the next meeting, could you give us a roadmap of how we're going to deal with this?
Yeah, we will put together a.
You know, we're not going to go back and review the general plan and have to end up changing something here again.
I will present kind of a conceptual review process.
A roadmap?
Yeah, that's an excellent idea, and I will do that.
Thank you. I think that's it. Meeting adjourned.